Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Tewksbury Zoning Board of Appeals for Thursday, May 23rd, 2019 is in session. I apologize for this, but first item that we're going to take on the agenda is the executive session. So the board is going to go into executive session, which means we're going to step into the other room. You guys will stay here. We'll do our business and then we'll be back. So we are in executive session. All right. Good evening. We're back in session. First item on the agenda is the continued hearing. Robert Sosha, you'll have to excuse me, I don't normally read these. Robert Sosha and Tiffany Sosha for variance under section 4132 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws for maximum lot coverage to construct a two-car, two-story addition to the existing single-family home as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 41 Patton Road, Assessors Map 56, Lot 124, Zoned Residential. Good evening.
Hello.
If you would just state your name and address for the record, please. Again.
Tiffany Sosha, 41 Patton Road.
Robert Sosha, 41 Patton Road.
All right. So the last time we were here, we wanted to do a site walk, and I believe we all did the site walk.
Yes.
I know what I did. All right. Board members have any questions regarding the site walk or regarding anything?
No.
Okay. Nothing?
No.
Nothing? Okay. Is there anything you'd like to add to it? Anything that's changed from last month? No?
No.
Okay. It's still a public hearing. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on this, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Colleen Glant. I live at 49 Patton Road, the house right beside Bob and Tiffany's. As I said in my last meeting, my concern was with my windows. Those are my bedrooms of my children. I actually have pictures also, too. In the last meeting, he said it wouldn't be interfering with any of my sunlight or my view or encroachment of my privacy. However, if you look at the stakes, the stakes are actually going to take out the three windows that are on that side of my home. I also do have a plot plan here of my property, which shows that I have an extra two feet that is on either side of where my fence is. Because when it was originally done back in those times, my father left a foot to take care of the existing fence that was there before. So I would want, if this does go through some type of compromise with windows, et cetera, but again, this is one of the reasons why the town originally only allowed you to build so many square feet on a certain size plot because you didn't want to overbuild or... I don't want to live in a city. I want my kids to grow up with room and, you know, I don't want blockage of sunlight. I don't want rooms that people are looking in. He had stated in his last thing that he wanted a working garage. What does that mean, a working garage? Is he going to be taking in other cars to fix? This is a family kind of street. Again, I don't think it would have made that much of a deal if it was on my driver's side of my home, but this is the actual living area of my home. So again, when you first originally asked him, he said that he was avoiding all of my windows, and as you can see where the stakes are, they're actually within the lines. And I have the pictures from my living room downstairs and also my kid's bedroom, which shows that it's literally going to be blocking all of the light on that side of my home.
I would actually like to see those pictures.
Can I come forward?
Yeah, please. You're going to have a hard time putting your phone on the record, but all right.
I didn't. My mother's actually been in high school for three weeks, so I have it. This is from... Here is his stake right here, and this is the window that is in my living room. That's the corner of the window. So he is literally in line of the first window that is in the beginning of my home. Here is the corner of the window again, and there is the line there. He has his stake. So it's still within the windows that he said wouldn't be in front. Again, here is the window. Here is the tree, and here is the stake. So it's literally maybe six inches from the corner of that. Then when you go up to my children's bedroom, there is the stake right there, which takes the top window. So he's literally right in line.
Do you guys want to see those pictures?
Please.
You'll have an opportunity to see them if you want.
This is my daughter's bedroom, and this is the window that's on the top of the house. The... Sorry. Here is the stake right here. So the corner of my daughter's window is in line where the stake was. And then the last window, he said it wouldn't interfere with any of the windows on the side of the house. There's another picture with the window actually open, so you can see that it's actually with the corner of my window. So it's like literally six inches. Then if you go down to the living, there's another bigger picture. So all of this would be starting from here all the way down there. Then if you go to the living room, which is downstairs, there is the stake, and here is the window, and it's the same thing from the view. There's the stake right over here, and here's the corner of the window down in the family room. So the build would be here and then up to 30 feet blocking all of that and whatever. Probably a bigger picture of that. There's the corner. There's the stake right there. Okay. Would you like to see?
How was that, that hearing?
We know what it looks like, thanks.
It's within range in between progress. I should remember that.
You know how tall your house is now? Your existing house?
It's 21... It's between 21 and 22 feet from the ground to the peak of the roof, which the garage... the proposed addition, the garage, is going to be more than... Ten-story on...
The breezeway only.
The breezeway, which is going to be two feet taller than the house. The reason for that is because the ceilings in the upstairs of the Cape are probably seven feet.
I'm just looking at your application. Your application says the proposed addition is 22.9 feet.
Well, with the...
And you just told me your house is 21, 21 and 1/2 for conversation.
That's what I'm guessing at. I mean, I didn't physically measure from the ground to the tip, but I mean, I'm looking at it. I think it's about 21 or 22 feet tall.
So is the addition going to be taller than the house?
Only the breezeway portion, not the garage portion. And the breezeway will still be 33 feet from the property line.
Breezeway portion going to be the same height?
I think it would be easier if we should...
Let me hold on. Let me hold one second. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
I'm not sure what their existing porch dimension is, but that they have now, I don't know if it's six or eight feet that they have currently now.
We have that. It is. Stand by. The existing porch breezeway is eight feet wide by 14.5 feet long.
Okay, because when we were speaking at the last meeting, if you add the 20 feet, three feet that they want to have the garage to be with the eight feet, that's bigger than what he had mentioned before.
The existing mudroom is being demoed. The new breezeway with the addition will still be 10 feet from the property line. We purposefully planned this project to be within the setbacks.
I'm looking at the proposed garage, which is what they would have to build to, and they're 10 foot, three inches off of your property line, off of their property line.
Well, that's my other question because my... the fence, I have my plot plan right here, which measures 98 feet with a foot over from where my fence is. So I'm hoping that they have a certified plot plan.
Absolutely. Of course they have a certified.
Okay.
You can't fill out an application without a certified plot plan.
All right. I just went going by what was said the last time, and then when he was saying how, when you asked him to put out the stakes, the stakes are not even. So what is the front of the... is the whole garage being twisted?
Our property is offset on...
Actually, the house is offset on the property.
Hold on. Hold on. I'll answer the questions from her. It comes from me. On their drawing, on their proposed drawing, they show us the closest point, which is the back, the back of the garage. That's 10 foot, three inches. As it comes to the front, it's wider. It's further away.
But not by much.
Not by much, but it is. It is further away.
But again, my whole main concern was that that's my living area, is my bedrooms are on that side. And when he was saying that it wouldn't interfere with any of that, obviously by seeing where the stakes are, it will. It will be an encroachment on my property, and it will be an overbuild on a lot. And again, if it was the opposite way and it was on my driver's side, I really wouldn't have that much of an issue with it.
I don't understand what you mean by driver's side.
On my driveway side. In other words, if they would... if my driveway was going to be abutting their new garage, I don't think I would have that much of a problem with it. But where my bedroom and living rooms and my windows are all going to be obstructed from views, sunlight, et cetera. And with his own saying that he wanted it as a working garage, I don't want to be woken up at 7 o'clock in the morning with things going off with kids and...
He's a residential... He's a residential neighborhood. He can't have a working garage.
Okay, well, that's nice.
That's... There's... Town ordinance has times where you can make noise, and he, like any other resident in town, has to advise... And he, like any other resident in town, has to abide by them.
Again, these are one of the reasons why people move out of the city, is so that they don't have people right on top of them.
I understand. That's why we did a sidewalk. I'll be honest with you, I didn't look at the other side of your house. That's why you lost me on driver's side. I wasn't concerned about the other side. I went and looked at the windows and the stakes and the height and things like that.
Yeah, I, because that was the contention. He said none of them would be blocked or it wasn't even in view of that. But as you can see, the, the build will be blocking off all of that. Like I said before, when, years ago, when my parents moved in there and they signed off for the current owners at the time, they did it with the garage starting behind the home so that they wouldn't run into problems like this.
Let me ask you a couple of questions. Let me ask you the question first. What, what is the lot coverage now?
Okay, so now what I'm proposing.
Proposed.
Okay, so because my house was built in '52, I'm allowed 20% coverage, which gives me 2,000 square feet. With the proposed addition, it's 21.91. So I'm asking for roughly 191 square feet. And the reason for that being is I have antique cars. I'm into old cars. It's a hobby of mine. I wanna, right now, I pay storage on the cars. I want to pull my old cars in and be able to have Tiffany pull a car in front of it and me pull my car in. The garage that's, the, the proposed garage, the front of the garage is set back, I believe it's six or eight feet from the house. Her front window, I designed that garage so when I looked out my side window, I could see the front of the garage, which our houses are in line. There's already a garage there, and my house already blocks her back windows. And the new garage is coming up eight feet from the existing garage that's already there. So if anything, it's gonna allow more sunlight, because our houses face south. I know because I had a garden there at one time.
May I say something? His garage doesn't come anywhere in line with my home. His garage is set back from my home. His garage is in line with my backyard. It's, it's not in line with my home or my foundation. And you can tell with, by these pictures, well, I don't know if you could tell, I didn't take one on that side.
We walked the site.
Right, but his garage currently now is not in line with any of my windows of my home. It's set back from my foundation.
But the exist, the proposed garage is set back, further back from my house as it is, and it does not block the front windows. I specifically had that garage designed so it didn't.
We're not...
I'm just trying to state the facts, so you understand them.
So you're 21, 21.91%?
I'm asking for 1.191 square feet to build a functional garage.
Last, last month, you mentioned that you thought they included your shed in that.
The 23 that's listed on the plot plan includes the shed. And the shed area is also separately line itemed out on the plot plan, so you can subtract it if it doesn't need to be included.
I don't know if it needs to be included. Okay. How big is the shed?
I think it's 80-something square feet. So altogether, it's 23% that we're requesting.
That's with the shed.
With the shed.
Say that again.
The lot coverage we are requesting is 23% including the shed.
So it's 21 without the shed?
Yes.
Okay. What I'm getting at, and I'm, I'm trying to find a happy medium here. Ma'am?
Yep.
What they're asking for is lot coverage, okay? So if they were to shrink that garage by 191 feet, we wouldn't be here.
I understand that.
It would be built.
I would have to be seeking a lawyer then if it's gonna encroach on my windows. I spoke with him prior, and he hasn't looked at me nor them. I have heard from several neighbors that there's stuff going around the street, which is ridiculous.
You had mentioned, you had mentioned something about windows on that side of the garage.
Right.
Are you worried about your privacy, or are you worried about the sun, or are you worried about not living in the city?
I'm worried about all of it. I'm worried about the environmental impact of a working, as he said, tinkering garage.
It's not a, it's not a working garage. It's a garage. There's gonna be cars in it. There's gonna be tools on it. He's not doing it for business. Okay.
I got my children's bedrooms and my living room is at, on that side. So I don't want to be looking out my window staring at a wall or having a window looking straight at me with him tinkering with a car.
But you already look at the side of my house. I don't understand what the issue is there.
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Just that the existing garage is not in line with my home.
This is ridiculous.
And if you go and take a look at it right now and was to drive right now, the existing garage is approximately, if I was to guesstimate, is about four feet from my foundation, and then it's over another 15 or so feet from the property line. Not to mention, I have a property plot plan of mine, which shows 98 feet. So there's another feet on either side of a fence.
He's within the guidelines.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about the fence. The fence is, we all know.
Well, I know. We're gonna see a certified plot plan when they have to build, so if they build that big. Most garages are 24 by 24.
I have a certified plot plan here. It's correct. I've had it done three times.
You're gonna direct your questions and answers to me?
I understand that.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
No, just that it's encroaching on the privacy and overbuild of lots in Tewksbury. And Tewksbury is supposed to be country. It's, you know, again, I don't want to open up my window and have the smell of gas because it's so close on my kid's bedroom not being able to be open or the sun coming in, et cetera. And this isn't, you know, if it was a, can come to a happy medium of no windows and possibly smaller and away from the home, then, you know, that's fine. But we're talking about a huge garage with a 10-foot. And again, these laws were made to begin with. This is an overbuild. Again, if it was on my driver's side of my home, which then had all of the other feet and wasn't encroaching on bedrooms and living rooms, it would be a different story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
It's fine.
Questions, thoughts, anything?
I'm looking at the, the increase that they're asking for, and if they were not to come here by making it smaller, it would come off the back of the garage. It would not make a difference to the, it would not offer the, the butter any relief.
What, on your proposed garage, what are you putting on that sidewall? The side towards your neighbor?
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna be vinyl sided like the rest of the house, the same color. And I was going to put two windows just to let light into it for daylight purposes. I have a picture of it.
Do I have that drawing in my packet?
I believe the town has a copy of it. But I don't, I'm not sure if you do.
Nope. I don't think they gave it to us. Mind if we see that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'll pass those around, Jerry. Give us a minute to look at that.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
I'd like to just say a couple of things before you guys make a decision, if I could. Tiffany and I have lived here for eight or nine years. I don't know the exact timeframe. But we bought the house with the intention to keep it. Over the last eight years, we've done a roof, a farmer's porch, a kitchen, a bathroom. We've tied into sewage. We've brought all the plumbing up to code with the intention to keep the house and stay there. This is our last thing to do to it, and we're hoping that we don't have to move. But we've got a lot of money invested into this house just to walk away from it. And we like the neighborhood. We get along great with all the neighbors, you know. But that's pretty much all we have to say.
Anything else, board members? Someone want to make a motion to close both pots in the hearing?
Make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
Second?
Motion has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
My turn for discussion. Any discussion? Nothing?
No.
So someone would like to make a motion?
I did last time. I owe you, buddy.
Make a motion to approve.
Excuse me?
Am I allowed to speak?
No. We close both pots of the hearing.
I didn't know there was windows on that side.
Making a, a motion to approve the variance for Robert Socha, Sokha.
Soha.
Soha. And Tiffany Soha for a variance from section 4132 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws for maximum lot coverage to construct a two-car, two-story addition to the existing single-family home as shown on the plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 41 Patton Road, assessors map 56, lot 124, zoned residential.
Motion has been made?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay. No. Okay.
Rob? Two ayes and one opposed?
That's a no.
It has to be unanimous?
Unanimous. Yep.
Is there any additional remedy that we can take to?
You can appeal our decision.
Okay.
Okay. But if you, if you shrink it, you can build it by right.
May, may I ask why, sir?
I think it's too big for the property. I do.
Can I say, can I say one more thing? I mean, I got...
It, it's not gonna change our vote, but.
I understand, but I'd like to say something. And I, I don't, I don't mean no disrespect to the board. But I mean, I've, I've been in the neighborhood, in the area, and I've seen a lot of things. I've seen a lot of additions that are comparable, if not bigger, that have less of a setback than what they should. I don't, I guess I'm having trouble understanding here. I don't.
I went and looked at the property, and this is my job. This is why I'm on this board.
I understand that.
And my feeling was it was too big for the property.
Okay.
It, it honestly didn't even have anything to do with your neighbor. I felt it was too big for the property. I looked around. The only other garage on that street is a lot further towards Whipple, and the properties down there start to open up. So that was, that was my opinion. Okay?
I mean, I have nine places here listed, I think, that have similar lots, and I've seen houses, they put additions up that are bigger than the existing house.
If you're not happy with...
And I mean, no disrespect. I'm just trying to understand it.
If you're not, it's basically my opinion.
Okay, okay.
That's why you come to this board. That's why there's three members. If you're not happy with it, appeal it.
Okay.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I take those, please?
Yep. Good luck. Next item on the agenda. Sharon Stocky for a variance from section 4130, Table of Dimensional Requirements, Appendix B of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws for side yard set, setback and minimum lot coverage to construct a two-car garage addition to the existing single-family home as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 66 Patton Road, assessors map 56, lot 180, zoned residential. Step up, please. Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Sharon Stocky, 66 Patton Road, Tewksbury.
John Stocky, 66 Patton Road, Tewksbury.
Thank you. Give me a minute to get the paperwork back together. Tell us a little bit about what you're doing, please.
I just wanted to do a two-car garage with a family room above. I've spoken to all the neighbors that are directly impacted. They have no issues with it.
So you're looking to cover 21.4?
Yes.
Just got a 20.
21.14, yeah.
Board members?
I'm sorry?
I was asking the board members if they had any questions.
I don't. Have any questions?
No questions.
No.
As far as the lot coverage, is the shed to be included in that, or? Because it is included in the calculations that we have.
If it's staying, it's to be included. If it's not staying...
If they move, so.
It's pretty close anyway, Joe.
How big's the shed? Well?
It's 97 square feet.
You are, what, 100 over?
114.
114. What is the sunroom on your?
It's just a...
It's a hot tub. When the surveyor came out, he referred to it as a sunroom.
Yeah, it's just a...
And I corrected him at the time.
Yeah, it's a prefabricated enclosure for a hot tub.
It's just like a little kit thing that just snaps together.
If there's a sunroom in the middle of your yard, it'd be different.
Definitely.
All right, well, if board members don't have any questions, being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public at this time if anyone would like to speak. Seeing none? What are you doing on the second floor of the garage?
There's just gotta be a family room.
You said that, didn't you? How close is the neighbor's house on that side?
He's actually, probably, I'm trying to think. I believe he's got three sections of fence there, so he's about 24 feet away. 24, 25 feet.
And what's the fence?
Yeah, he's got a fence that runs perpendicular to the property line towards his house. That's all he's got, is fence there. We spoke to him before we even went this far with everything, and he has no issues with it at all. Has no issues with it at all.
I want to look at it. I want, I want to do a sidewalk. I think a picture's worth a thousand words to me anyways. I want to do a sidewalk. So if you could stake it out, we'll continue meeting till our next hearing, which is next month.
So I'll just stake out, because part of where the garage is going is the existing driveway. So put a stake in the driveway or...
No, we don't want you to ruin your driveway. We don't want you to ruin your driveway. Where's your driveway, right next to the house?
Yeah, it's, the driveway goes, is pretty much right in the whole area towards the front there. So where the proposed addition is from that porch that we have with the stairs versus group over porch, the driveway is right across that hole right inside there.
Yeah, I'll just go with the print. And if you can put some stakes, if the outside edge is off the driveway?
Uh, no, it's, it's in the driveway as well.
Got any cones? Put a cone on it.
Okay.
I was gonna say orange, can you maybe?
No, don't take it. Cone would work.
Okay.
Cone something, anyway. Just so we can go out and look at what it is. All right? Do we have permission to walk any property?
Yeah. As long as, as long as we...
I do have two dogs. Just so if you open up the gate, just be aware that they don't bite, just so that they don't get out.
Are they friendly?
They're friendly.
Okay. Bring a dog, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, a couple.
All right, so I'll look for a motion to continue so we can do a sidewalk. We have the owner's permission to walk the site. As always, we won't go together. It will not be a meeting, and we don't expect to see anyone while we're there. Okay? So if we're there, wave if you want, but don't come over and start explaining it to us. Because that makes it a meeting, and we can't do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Now I'd like to make a motion to continue to our next scheduled hearing, which would be...
June 27?
June 27.
Oh, wait a minute.
Motion to continue the hearing for Sharon Stocky for the variance of 4130, Table of Dimensional Requirements, Appendix B of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws for side yard setback and maximum lot coverage to construct a two-car garage addition to the existing single-family home as shown on the plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 66 Patton Road, Assessors Map 56, Lot 180, zoned residential.
Motion has been made?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is John Carroll, Manager of Redevelopment Associations LLC on behalf of Paul Murphy for variance under Section 4130, Appendix B for acreage and a special permit under Section 3630 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws to raise the existing structure and construct a new single-family home as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 56 Pupkus Road, Assessors Map 69, Lot 6, zoned residential. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Robert Peterson, 314 Main Street, Wilmington, for the applicant, John Carroll, Redevelopment Associates. With me this evening is Mr. Carroll. As the chairman read in the legal notice, Mr. Carroll has applied for variance under Section 4130, Appendix B of the zoning bylaws of the town of Tewksbury and the special permit under Section 3630 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Tewksbury to demolish the existing dwelling and to construct a new dwelling at 56 Pupkus Road. With the application that Mr. Carroll has submitted, Mr. Chairman, he outlined the nature of the existing parcel, which is known as Map 69 Lot 6 on the Assessors Maps of the town of Tewksbury. This parcel is located on a subdivision plan that was established and recorded at the Middlesex North District Registry of Deeds in 1903. So every lot in this neighborhood precedes the requirement that a lot has an acre of square footage. So if you look at the Assessors Map that Mr. Carroll submitted with his application, there's two maps. Exhibit A is the original subdivision plan from 1903. 1909? Sorry, 1909. And also, we submitted Tax Map 69, which shows that the average size of a lot in that neighborhood is between a third and a fourth of an acre. So every, there's no lot in that neighborhood other than the ones that are about the Shoshine River. They'd approach anywhere near an acre in size. It's also required, we applied for a special permit to demolish the existing dwelling and to construct a new dwelling. And in the opinion of the applicant, the existing dwelling will in fact be a substantial improvement to the neighborhood and not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. If any of you are familiar with this area, I call this the Woodlot. This was the area where firewood was backed out to Whipple Road. It's now, 99% of it's been removed, and the lot has been cleaned up. And Mr. Carroll feels that to demolish the existing dwelling and to construct a new dwelling in its location would continue the improvement of that neighborhood. We meet all the setbacks. The only deficit on this lot, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, is the size of the lot not being... And Mr. Carroll has submitted detailed plans for the home. And if you have any particular questions about the specifications of the home, he'd be happy to, A, answer them and B, allow them to be entered into the record.
I'll go back to the picture. So you're basically tearing down, you want to tear down the house that's right on the edge of the property line, seven foot, four inches away from the property line? And then, which is frontage, because that's Coolidge Street? And then push the house back. You're meeting all the requirements. And your only problem is the lot's too small.
Correct.
It was too small when you bought it. Any questions, board members?
None.
Jerry, you can ask questions on this one, too. Any questions?
None.
Okay.
No.
Have you seen these 100 times?
Yeah.
Being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public if anyone would like to speak on this matter. Please come up to the podium, state your name.
My name is Michael Tabaglis. I live in 81 Pupkus Road, Tewksbury. I have a question for Mr. Carroll. Why the new proposed building does not leave 25 feet from Coolidge Street and 25 feet from Pupkus Road?
I can answer that question. Sure.
Actually, excuse me about that. The proposed lot plan here has 26 feet from Pupkus Road and...
50 from Coolidge.
15 feet.
50 from Coolidge.
15 from Coolidge.
50, five zero.
The application says 50. Proposed... Proposed application says 15.
Let me read the exact same thing you have, sir. Side yard setback. Take that back with you. I have the same thing right in my hand. Well, what we, what we do, sir, I understand your concern with that. We look at the certified plot plan because that's what he's going to build by. And he's actually listing a side yard setback. And the only side yard setback he has is, let me ask the applicant. On your, on your plot plan, to the right of the proposed structure, as I'm looking at it, where it says Lot B, where is that property line?
All the way to the far right.
All the way over.
You know, it's probably 150 feet away.
100, give or take 150 feet. So what he's proposing to build, sir, is Coolidge Street and Pupkus Road are both frontage. It's 15 feet.
On Coolidge Street? That's a side, right?
Coolidge Street is not a side setback because it's a street. It's a front setback.
So it's going to be 25 from Coolidge and 25 from Pupkus?
It is going to be 50 feet from Coolidge and 26 feet from Pupkus.
So why the application require...
I think the application might be a typo. The side yard setback that he has is 150 feet.
I understand that, but still, the application says 15 feet.
I was, if I might just...
So you're going to grant, you're going to grant approval based on the application, right?
We will grant approval with plans filed with this board. This is the plan.
Okay.
If, if we do grant or deny, whatever it is, we always say in our motions, "with plans filed with this board." This is the plan.
Okay.
These, the application, they come in a lot of times with typos on them.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, for a point of clarification?
Yes.
I think Mr. Carroll did fill out the application. I think what he put on the application is the minimum required setbacks. And we would have no objection to you conditioning any decision on this matter based on the plot plan submitted, because those are going to be the actual setbacks.
Which we're going to do anyways.
Thank you.
Does that clarify it for you, sir? I understand your concern.
The minimal, the minimal requirement for public property is 25 feet. I see here, you know, it's 15 feet.
He's got 50 and 26. And that...
15 feet?
He's got... The application is a typo.
Okay.
We don't vote on the application anyways. We vote on the plans. So the proposed structure that he wants to build will be 50 feet from Coolidge, 26 feet from Pupkus, 22 feet off of the back. And we're estimating at 150 feet off of the right side of the house setback.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just show him the plot plan?
Sure.
Yes, I understand that, but I, my, okay. All right. I'll answer. I, I am for, you know, the change and everything. Yeah. But again, you know, it's like, I was thinking about your point.
Are there any other concerns, sir?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
Sir, I'm going to close both pots of the hearing. So if you have any more questions?
I know, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All set?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Second?
All set?
Yes, sir.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any discussion? I think it's an improvement to the neighborhood. I think the neighbors agree. Just make sure, when we do make a motion, that we are very clear that it is, you know, even saying the motion that there are typos on the application and we are, we are voting with the plan filed with this board.
It says that in the statement already.
Make a motion to approve the variance for John Carroll, Management of Redevelopment Associates LLC on behalf of Paul Murphy for variance from Section 4130, Appendix B for acreage and a special permit under Section 3630 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to raise the existing structure and construct a new single-family home as shown on the plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 56 Pupkus Road, Assessors Map 69, Lot 6, zoned residential.
Before we second that one, we need to take that motion off the table. My fault. I didn't read it ahead quick enough.
Have to do the special permit first. Okay.
So that motion is dead. Has not been seconded, it's dead.
All right. So make a motion for the special permit under Section 3630 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for John Carroll, Manager of Redevelopment Associates LLC on behalf of Paul Murphy to raise the existing structure and construct a new single-family home as shown on the plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 56 Pupkus Road, Assessors Map 69, Lot 6, zoned residential.
Motion has been made?
Second.
Second and all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the variance from Section 4130 for John Carroll, Manager of Redevelopment Associates LLC on behalf of Paul Murphy for acreage of the, I'm sorry, for variance of Section 4130 for acreage of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to raise to... Said property is located at 56 Pupkus Road, Assessors Map 59, Lot 6, zoned residential.
Boy, that was a mouthful.
Second.
And second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all set.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Usually when we have a lot of people, they all want to talk. I was waiting. All right. Any old business, board members?
No.
We are still in need of one new member. Any new business?
Needing a member?
We need a new member. Hold on just one second. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.